The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this special board meeting for the purpose of a board and superintendent retreat. We will start the meeting off with a roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Hello, Warren.
Here.
Here.
Leighton and Warren.
Here.
Vanden Hoofel.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
All seven board members are present. We have a number of items on our agenda tonight that were crafted, both with myself and Vice President McCoy, along with Superintendent Merly. Some are issues related to board operations and others are an update on our facilities master plan. So we'll jump right into the agenda and starting with our new board member handbook.
Yeah, whoops. Other one, there we go. Thank you. So what do you have on that agenda item? If you pull it up and you look at the agenda, you'll see the link there to it. And you'll also see a couple of links to WASB resources. And the intentionality behind this, especially for those of you who've come onboard recently, you know that it can be a vertical learning curve or drinking out of a fire hose or any one of those other analogies. And so our goal here is to make it a smoother onboarding process. And so actually, a big chunk of thanks goes to Beth Jones here, who's been working with various members of our admin team and support staff to put this together. And again, the intention is to make sure that we are as comprehensive as possible. So we share this with you for two reasons. First of all, the opportunity to go through it and make sure that you're familiar with the contents in here. But we'd also ask that you read through it with a critical eye. And if you can, think back to the time you joined the board. For several of you, that might be a few years ago. But if you think back to the time that you joined the board and also your time serving on the board, to help us make sure that we have content in here, which will help new board members come up to speed as quickly as possible, so that they're ready to jump in shortly after they get elected. So I won't spend a significant amount of time going over it. But you see from the table of contents in there that we've tried to be as detailed as possible. This entire document is hyperlink, so you're able to click through it in fairly short order. But we cover everything from expectations and the way the board currently functions, our resources with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, some of the overall information about the district as a whole. And then you'll note that we also have a new board member checklist on there. And hopefully, what that does is it helps board members also in the self-study processes, they come up to speed, but also in ensuring that they know who to reach out to and get additional information from if there are areas that they encounter in their onboarding that they are not familiar with. So I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to run through it ahead of time. But again, our ask of you is to look through it with that critical eye and to help us do that gap analysis to make sure that this is ready to go when we get to our next election, if we should have new members join the board at that time.
Go ahead, Don.
First off, this is really fantastic. I'm looking at the org chart, though. I can't make it bigger on here. Do we have something that has people's names in it?
We do, and we're going to get that updated. We are in the middle of the hiring process for several positions right now, and that's on my list of things to do July 2nd. And so when we get that done, we'll have that in here. We'll also have that up on the website.
One of the other things too, and I know it's an upcoming agenda item, but there is the presentation on the Robert's Rules and the open forum. Those would be valuable things to link into this, too.
Yeah, I think Robert's Rules is linked already. Yeah. It's long. I mean, it's a fifty-some page document, I think.
Yep, it's on page...
Well, that's fine.
Yep.
It's in there, yeah, because I remember reading part of it.
It's on page four.
What was the other one you asked for, Don?
Um, the one that...
Oh, okay. And I... No, no, I can't remember.
I mean, the opens meeting law is linked. It's on page five.
But you're right. We've got some great presentations, and it's easy for us to link those in. So sometimes it's easier to follow through on those things when you read slide decks. And so those are definitely things that we can link in here so that people can have ready access to it. And we do see this. I didn't share this at the beginning, but we see this as an organic document. So this is going to change over time. It's one of the reasons that we built it out so that it's online, so that as the need arises, we can make sure that it stays up to date. So we do not plan to print it for that reason, so that we can continue to modify and update it as we move forward.
So if we have a presentation in the next four months or something, and we think, oh, this is a huge resource, we just ask Beth to link it?
Absolutely, and then we can get it in the table of contents in there for easy access, and then we can get it uploaded.
Go ahead, Andrew. So I thought about whether to say this or not, since this new board member stuff doesn't matter until at least, at least April. But I just do want to point out that the, you know, the new member handbook from WASB, which is a great organization, it does outstanding legislative advocacy work, many commendable things. It absolutely is written from a hands-off perspective. It represents, although it does say things that board members legally can't do, and also things that only can legally be done by the board, that's true. It represents, some of it represents, an opinion about the balance of... The balance of power. So I guess my preference would be, since everyone receives it anyways, to have it not presented by the district in such a way that makes it look like it's mandatory, but...
What is mandatory?
Well, you become a new board member, you're handed something from the district with GBAPs on it, or take electronically, and that handbook is linked in it. It can be hard to, you know, perhaps, it implies, it implies a district endorsement of everything that's in the book. And, you know, by state law, board members can choose different paths than some of what's in there. Yes, it also says, you know, don't hold illegal quorums and things like that, which are important, too, so...
Given that we have other WASB materials, and Andrew, would it help if we put a disclaimer in there so that that was clear right from the outset, that these are resources available to the district because we are members as a district of WASB, but that inclusion of it is not an endorsement of that?
Probably. Probably. There's some time to work it out, and we don't need to wordsmith it here. I also wouldn't want to write it in such a way that the things that are legal requirements that WASB explains well seem optional either. So, but we have time. I just, I thought about whether I could not say anything about it, and I decided I couldn't not say anything about it, so I did, so...
I just wanted to thank you for putting this together. I know that's a lot of work. I went through it last night, and nothing stuck out to me that was missing. So I appreciate that. And Andrew, I think you should not doubt what you should bring up. I think it's always good to have, whatever points are brought up for discussion or for consideration. So I appreciate that.
It was only a question of the timing, for sure. I always bring it up, so...
All right. Any other questions on the new board member handbook? Beth, thank you very much for all the time that you put into this. This, some of us will still, will certainly benefit from this now, and new board members in the future. So, all right, moving on then to letter B, open meetings and public records. And I think Melissa's going to help us with that.
Just one more thing on that board member handbook. We had also put together a Google Drive of all of our legal updates that we've given the board in the past. So I've shared that with Beth, and she's going to link that in there as well, so that you still have all of those resources, and the new board members can access them as well. I just want to apologize ahead of time. I managed to somehow get a summer cold, so I apologize in advance. So in the past, we have given board members updates on open meetings and public records, because this is really central to your role as board members. So I'm back with some of those updates, especially for the new board members who may not have heard this. A lot of this is not intuitive, and so I think it's good for everybody to hear it again, for those of you that have already heard it, so that we all know what the rights and our obligations are with respect to those laws. I'm going to start with the open meetings law. So it's open meetings, public records, which seems weird, why wouldn't they use the same word for both of those topics? But that's how the law is written. The first topic that I always like to address is what are the posting and notice requirements? And really, we try to be as specific as possible, so that the public can anticipate and have a reasonable expectation as to what the board is going to discuss. General topics are really frowned upon, because the public cannot anticipate what a general topic is really going to be, what is really going to be discussed under that general topic. So we need to be as specific as possible, so the public can anticipate as to what the board is going to discuss. Any item that you are going to act on needs to be noticed for action. That's a requirement of the law. So that is why, when you look at our agenda, action items are always separated out underneath items entitled "action." And we try as much as possible to provide a sample motion, so that the public is also aware as to what is the recommended action the board is going to be taking that night. Of course, that can always be amended, but at least the public would have some anticipation as to what action is being proposed. We're required to publish our notices as a Class 1 legal notice, and we use both the Green Bay Press Gazette and the Press Times. We cannot use an online notice in lieu of those written publications. So even though all of our notices are also online, we also have to post those in the newspaper. We have to give the time, date, place, subject matter of the meeting, and what is being considered by the board in those notices. One of the memos that I wrote is included in this presentation, that you can find some more information on that. Importantly, when you are meeting, you cannot discuss things that are not noticed. So on Monday, when I had to stop the board from going in the area as to what was noticed, it was because that would have been an open meeting violation if you would have continued to discuss that item that was not properly noticed. The second item, and I think this is probably very relevant, given that the board is now moving into a committee, a formal committee structure, all of those formal committees that you have designated need to follow the same rules with respect to meetings as your regular board meeting. So you still need to notice those. They have to have an agenda. You have to follow what is on that agenda. You can't discuss things that are not on your committee agendas in those committees. So the same rules will apply when you're operating in your committees as you are as the board as a whole. The third topic, if you want to go to the next slide, Josh, walking quorums. And a few more slides on this topic, because this is a pitfall for some boards. A walking quorum is a series of gatherings among separate groups of members of a governmental body, each less than the quorum, so less than four, because we're a board of seven, who agree tacitly or explicitly to act uniformly in a sufficient number to reach a quorum. So as an example, if an issue is coming up to be voted on, if Laura is particularly interested in making sure the item passes, Laura has a discussion with Brenda, then Laura has a discussion with Eric, and then Laura has a discussion with Laura, that could be considered a walking quorum. And you can do that in email, you can do that in verbal conversations, you can do that in meetings outside of the board meeting. Walking quorums are prohibited under the open meetings law, because the public is not privy to you conducting your board business in those walking quorums. The essential feature of a walking quorum is the element of an agreement among the members of the body to act uniformly in a sufficient number to reach a quorum. In addition, I've noticed recently, and it's become more prevalent, texting during board meetings. So if someone is, if you are texting each other during the course of a board meeting, that too could be considered a walking quorum, because you are not conducting your business in front of the public, and the public does not have access to those discussions during the board meeting. Similarly, any text message you receive during the course of a board meeting is subject to the public records law. So if individuals from outside the board are texting you regarding a meeting agenda item, that could be considered a violation of the open meetings law, because you're not conducting your business in front of the public. But it also could then be considered a public record, because you are conducting business through that text message, and it's related to your duties as a board member. There is a case from Dane County, where the Dane, a committee of the Dane County Board was doing this, and they were found to be in violation of the open meetings law and public records requests were made for those text messages. So I would really, really, really strongly suggest not to text during a board meeting. Of course, we're all parents, and there may be some emergencies that arise. Purely personal text messages are not going to be subject to public records, because they're purely personal. But if you are talking about matters that are on the board agenda or related to your duties as a board member, I would strongly suggest you do not do that through text messages or emails during those board meetings.
Go ahead.
Um, I'll just be frank here. I've actually observed board members, not recently, but receiving texts from people in the audience and responding accordingly. That's something else I would like to see, you know, just stop. Because having access to a board member during a board meeting is just deeply unfair to the general public, I think.
It also violates open meetings law, because again, you're not conducting that business where the public can see that business during the course of your meeting. Eric, did you have something?
I was just going to ask about, you know, any action that we should take if that were to happen, or... Oh, no, I'm sorry. My question was, if somebody texts a board member during a meeting, we don't respond, we didn't ask them to do that, the message comes in, but that still apply to...
So we're going to, later in the presentation, I'm going to talk about when members of the public contact you, and members of the public who contact you, that is considered a public record. So those text messages, if it's related to your board business. Now, if someone outside of the board is your friend, and they're asking you, what's for supper tonight? That's largely purely personal, and that probably would not be considered a record under the public records law. But if they're talking to you in your role as a board member, that is going to be subject to a public records request.
Thank you.
Even if you don't respond?
Correct. Same as your emails. Even if you don't respond to those emails that come into you, those are subject to public records. And that's the Urban Bot case out of Madison. Okay, Josh, did you go to the next slide already? Okay, thank you. So again, depending on how the messages are used, electronic communications such as email, texting, instant messaging, that could create a meeting. And again, that is why we need to stay away from those walking quorums. If a communication closely resembles an in-person discussion, they can constitute a meeting, and if they involve enough members, and to control the action by the body. The next slide talks about as an example of actions regulated under open meetings. You create the walking quorum through any series of communications among members of the board who agree to act tacitly, explicitly, and to act uniformly, and in a sufficient number to determine the board's course of action on any matter. So sometimes you are required to have a two-thirds vote. So there's also something called a negative walking quorum, where if you have enough members, so example, three members where two-thirds vote would be required, three members are considered a negative walking quorum, because you need a super majority to pass something. So it's not always four, sometimes it could be three. Okay. The next slide, board comments on district hires. And this has come up here in the district in the past. We always want to make sure that any statements we are making about people who are on the recommendation to be hired are supported by facts and ascertained through adopted legal hiring processes, and they're not simply comments that are being made outside of facts or through other means. A candidate could file a tortuous conduct or defamation claim if those comments are made. There is a memo that is included in here as well for board members, if you'd like to refer to some more legal authority on that topic. Responding to public comments during meetings, number five. I think even for our new members, I think we've addressed this at most of our meetings. Eric makes a comment as to why we cannot comment on matters during those public forums. And it goes back to the notice requirements of a meeting, because the public has to be given reasonable notice as to what's going to be discussed by the board in the course of that meeting. So when the public comes, it's the general topic of public comments, but the specific matters that the public is going to come to you are not properly noticed on your agenda. And so we can listen to those comments, but you cannot engage in discussion with the individual who comes forward. And so it's always nice to let them know why, and Eric does a nice job letting them know why we can't respond, and that someone can follow up with them then after those comments. Sure. So on Monday evening during the open comment portion, Beth Lane had commented about something on the agenda. So then would it be appropriate for a board member to respond to her at that time, or still not, because it's still part of the public forum? You are permitted to engage with somebody about a topic that is on the agenda. What is tricky is that the public sees the agenda and the order, and so then they anticipate how that is going to go. And so while you could technically discuss something with somebody during the public comment period if it's on your agenda, it might not be as transparent to the public if you do it at that time, because they're waiting for that agenda item to come up in the order that it's noticed. Okay. Okay, so here's the topic on the public contacts with, contacts and communication with the board. This again goes back to the Urban Bot case during Act 10. Public communications with board members are subject to public records requests. When an individual contacts the board, their name and contact information is subject to disclosure. And then the Wisconsin Supreme Court ruled that the public has an interest in knowing who's contacting elected officials, and that's why members of the public's name and contact information is subject to disclosure and not redaction. And so we've suggested in your email signature line that you put a disclaimer that when the public contacts you, that that information is subject to public records, just so they're not surprised if records have been requested. And given the voluminous number of records requests we've received this year, people's emails and contacts to the board have been released, as well as their names and contact information. So this has happened here. Similarly, text messages would be subject to release as well. You are your own records custodian, so you would need to maintain those records. If you're being texted related regarding your official board business, you are required to maintain those, should they be requested. And which is the number, the next topic. I seem to be ahead of myself here. You are your own records custodian. So the district will maintain any emails that you receive in the course of your official board business and that are sent to your district email address. But if you receive messages on, through Facebook Messenger, through a social media platform, through texting, through a personal email, and they're related to your duties as a school board member, you have to maintain those messages. It's not the device you receive them on, it's not the address you receive them at, it is the content of the communication that determines whether they're subject to public records. So that's why we really just encourage you, use your district email, because we can maintain those for you. We have a system in place, and we can maintain those for you. We don't maintain any social media accounts that board members may have. We don't maintain any of your personal email addresses, so all of that you have to maintain for yourself. And the record retention requirement is seven years. So let's say your three-year term is up, you would need to maintain those records for a total of seven years, even after your tenure on the school board.
Go ahead, Bridget. One, Melissa gave me this suggestion a few years ago, because, of course, I have friends who have my personal email, who sometimes email me there, and her recommendation, which makes it really easy, is to put your board email address and reply to the person, and reply to your board email address, too, and then that shoves it into your board record, so you don't have to worry about keeping, you know, a file of personal email messages.
I forgot I told you that.
No, you've got to remember this good advice you give out, you know, Melissa.
Okay, so speaking of social media, of course, the open meetings law and the public records apply to any social media accounts you have. I guess back when I started, thirteen, fifteen years ago, this was never a topic, because this wasn't ever an issue, but social media is so prevalent. So we want to make sure that we're addressing it, and the courts are now starting to address cases as well with respect to social media. So we've gotten some pretty good case law out there to give board members guidance. Again, the open meetings law applies to your social media, so a walking quorum could exist if board members are commenting on each other's social media accounts. Tweets, retweets, those sorts of things could all constitute a walking quorum, especially if you're talking about how you may be voting on an upcoming agenda item or a position you may take. The law regarding student records, so FERPA and Wisconsin Statute 118.125 also applies. So we should never be sharing identifiable student information through social media. We should never be identifying students. I always say, a good rule of thumb is the district's official social media account. If you want to share pictures of students, pictures of good things that are happening in the district, the district's communications department already knows what students have opted out of pictures that can be shared. So it's resharing the pictures that are on the district's official Facebook account are always pretty safe, because those have already been run through that filter. But if you're in schools, and if you want to take pictures, you're going to have to make sure that you know whether those students have opted out of having their pictures taken for school purposes.
Adults in that group, too? If we're at a school, and we take a picture, and we avoid having kids in it, is it the same concern?
Our social media policy talks about sharing pictures of other adults and making sure you have their permission to do so. We don't keep track of that, but we just always want to make sure that you have permission to do so. And again, going back to the public records issue, anything that you are doing on social media, whether it's your own account, whether it's other Facebook accounts, whether it's other groups in your capacity as an official school board member, those are considered public records. So when you're posting on other accounts, make sure that you're keeping a log of those, because we have gotten public records requests for board... we have gotten public records requests for board members' posts on other social media platforms and other accounts. And those board members have had to go back and then retrieve all of those posts when they're acting in their official capacity as a school board member. And we do not maintain those here in the district. So you would have to go back and and get all of those for a public records request. Just like student confidential confidentiality, employee confidentiality also applies. So communications regarding matters that involve employees due to potential violations of the laws surrounding employee privacy and confidentially of confidentiality of employment record information, we we really urge you to stay away from making those sorts of posts and those sorts of disclosures through social media. And then i- it's always a a fine line when you create a social media account in your capacity as a school board member, whether you've created a public forum for discussion. And the courts right now are solidly in the camp of you have likely created a public forum and therefore you cannot block individuals from your page from discussing things that may not be helpful or flattering or or even constructive, and you can't delete comments either. So again, just making sure that you understand if you're creating the the um, social media account for purposes of your school board activity, that you are probably creating a public forum, which will then um, be regulated under the First Amendment. And making sure that you're being consistent with that.
Just to be clear though, that um, in a, the case of a candidate who has created a page for Fa- um, on Facebook, that that page they can, they do have control over, as they, as far as who, you know, whether or not they can delete or anything like that. There's a, there's a very different kinds of of um, accounts.
Your candidate page should be separate from your official school board member page, correct?
But they're, they also are, have different rules, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so my um, my, I'll probably work on some rewording and maybe even the, I certainly wasn't going to, and I didn't know if I was gonna be in or not, but I will probably end up creating something that is more clearly uh, an official school district page. The page that I have, though I've kept it active the whole time, I think clearly is a candid page. It's slash vote Becker is the URL of it. So I guess there's no, there's nothing to stop me from what I did, but I guess I'm concerned about the same situation if it were on someone's official page. So although my perspective as a candidate was to um, accept in extreme circumstances, not block. I mean, I let people, you know, people can say, you know, Becker sucks, it's gonna stay on there. People can say, I, you know, I love Becker, it stays on there. Uh, I did have it, there were, there was one person I did block from my candidate site. And it was someone who had just made a very sexually vulgar comment about um, a lady who had posted some content that she disagreed with. So is there any, is there any recourse even there in the public? Eh, on a official site?
Yes, not all statements are protected under the First Amendment. So extreme vulgar violent statements probably do not have the protections of the First Amendment. And those sorts of statements probably could be deleted from an account. We'd have to do a individual uh, determination based on those statements, but yeah, not all statements would be given First Amendment protections. And the same with the district's page as well.
I, I think in my case, I actually, I actually hit it. So technically it was still available. And again, that was a candid page, so it's more if I ever needed it, but um, okay, thank you.
So sometimes on candidate pages, pages, um, public forums start to happen. And so if, are you saying that if, that as a, as the board member candidate, we should not get involved in that conversation? Or we should direct them to our official board? This is for people that are already on the board is what I'm talking about. Or do we direct them to have this forum on a different site?
So I'm I'm not prepared to talk exactly the line you need to draw between your candidate page and your school board member page. But if you are developing a page as a candidate, I would suggest that you contact WSB as well as the Government Accountability Board to get some very clear advice as to what can partake on your candidate page versus your official school board member page, because there is a line. Okay, all right. Number nine, public records versus pupil records. So oftentimes, um, we get requests for pupil records and in addition to getting requests for public records. Pupil records are exempted from being disclosed as a public record. It's a bright line e- exemption under the public records law. And so if you are um, being asked for email and it contains information in an email about, for example, someone, they contact you regarding some concerns and then they go in to talk about their own particular student and their own particular student's struggles or information related to that student in the course of being a student in the district. We would have to redact that information out of your emails before we could release that email as a public records. So just a a reminder that it's okay to talk with your constituents about their students because we would redact that information out of emails if we would be requested to provide those emails through a public records request. And then number ten, which I think we've already uh, touched on, again, it's not the device or the account that's gonna matter with respect to public records, it's the content of those emails. So just a another reminder to, eh, eh, if possible, use your district account so that you are not then taxed with having to dig up all sorts of communications when we get public records requests. Any questions? That was like lightning speed, open re- uh, open meetings and public records.
Um, just, just one question, feel free if this, if this is too, you know, too subtle and nuanced for, would take too much time here, that's, that's fine. Is there, is there just really no distinction whatsoever in state law and in case law between the talking about a topic and action on a topic? Like if someone were looking at, if someone were just, I would imagine someone might, might think it's relatively common sense, but I know it's not about common sense, it's about case law, um, that you would have a little more leeway to um, you know, talk about something, but action you'd keep a lot tighter. But it sounds like from what you were saying, there's, there's really no distinction, it's really?
So I think what you're asking is, if an item is only posted for discussion, is there more leeway if the discussion on that item strays into something that's not posted on the agenda? Is that what you're asking?
No, I guess, I I guess I'm going to the issue of okay, so this, I guess this, this would be an example. If, you know, if something comes up at a, at a public forum, is it illegal even at the end of the meeting to have brief discussion about whether it merits being on an agenda?
We often on our agenda have the act, have the discussion item of future agenda items. So it would be proper under that agenda item, but I if you don't have that posted and you're just simply going back to the public comment period to talk about something, that would not be appropriate.
Okay, that, that is written pretty broadly though, and that one's, but that one's okay.
Because the public would know that you're talking about items you want to bring forward at a future, uh, a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, thank you very much uh, for your expertise. This, this is all very complicated stuff and it's nice to have you here to help us with that. All right, um, let's see. Robert's Rules of Order and Parliamentary Procedures.
We go right from open meetings and public records to Robert's Rules and Parliamentary Procedures. So I, one of the things you'll see attached there is a a slide deck. Uh, it's from a group called WASA, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Superintendent's Assistance. Uh, in it, so it's for people in Beth's role from all over the state. Uh, and this is a presentation that was made at uh, one of their recent conferences. Uh, we included it for you uh, for one significant reason. Obviously, things have changed a little bit in meeting structures over the course of the past year. Uh, and many organizations now have some element of online participation. That has changed uh, some of the ways that uh, they have interpreted Robert's Rules of Order. That's a long deck. There's fifty-two slides in there, lots and lots of information. Definitely encourage you to go over that. It covers some of the things that Melissa just covered, so it gives you an opportunity to get a refresh on that. Um, one of the things that uh, we are doing, as Beth is new to her role, um, is she's working on uh, her uh, skill set with Robert Tools of Order. Uh, there are some opportunities here locally for her to do some training on that. In addition to things like this that she's done at the state level, uh, we just more than anything else wanted to make sure that these resources were available to you. So as they become available to us, we will be pushing them out to you and also let you know that uh, we will work to ensure that uh, between Beth and I that uh, we have uh, not only brushed up on these, but on Robert's Rules of Order in general, so that we can assist you as you go through that parliamentary procedure process that governs both our board meetings and our committee meetings. So Beth is with us. We didn't anticipate that you would have a lot of questions about this. But if you do, uh, we would either be more than happy to try to answer those for you now, or more likely, take them down and get back to you as we move forward.
Thank you for doing this. I, I mean, I've been on the board four plus years now, and this is the thing that seems to trip us up in meetings more than almost anything is trying to make sure that we do things properly, but not so um, so strictly that it impedes discussion. And uh, you know, there's a fi- of element of fairness and all kinds of stuff in it. Um, and you know, it's pretty complicated, sometimes, especially when we get into amendments and and in difficult and complicated issues. So having one or two people who really know their stuff is absolutely vital when we get in those um, predicaments where we sometimes can't quite find our way out. But we want to still do it right. So um, I I really appreciate this. Thank you.
And if you're looking through the slide deck, you'll see in there that it's got a pretty good overview of the uh, four methodologies that are in there for amendments, uh, promotions and amendments. Uh, it's a really good uh, understanding. Can you amend an amendment type of thing? And it, it walks you through some of that. So I definitely encourage you to take a look at this deck. Uh, unfortunately, it's one of those things where it's a skill that, um, if you don't need it today, you may not remember the context of the content in here. Uh, and so uh, we recognize that that part of that is what comes up at the meeting and um, that's the intentionality behind both providing you the resources so you have access to them later and also coming up to speed on our end uh, from a training process. So we're ready to support when we get into those meetings. Thank you.
All right. Uh, last part under Board Operations Letter D is the Superintendent Evaluation Framework.
And I'll start and I, then Eric and Laura are more than welcome to jump in here. Uh, so you see on there, there's three different resources for you. One is a recent webinar uh, that uh, may be a familiar uh, name to many of you. Dan Nared connect, uh, conducted for WSB. Um, he is now working with them, uh, as they work to introduce this uh, Superintendent Evaluation Framework across the state. Uh, you'll see two additional uh, attachments. One is the framework itself. Uh, and the second one is the presentation that he used during that uh, that webinar. Uh, this is a definite move in the right direction. Uh, and given the fact that there's been no standardized process for evaluating superintendents across the state, um, WSB is really excited about this. They've also worked with WASA, which is the School Superintendent's Association. Uh, and uh, they both endorse this process. Uh, so uh, this is something that we are working to implement here in the district. Uh, and so we've had conversations about it already. You may recall uh, that when we went through the process in January, that this was the framework that we used um, for that particular element. Uh, and uh, if you watch the webinar, um, you'll see in there that Dan talks about what you do the first year. Uh, superintendent evaluations in in uh, Wisconsin are only required once every three years, but he would remind you that it's best practice to do it annually. Um, we've got it set up so that we'll do a formative and a summative process here in the district. That's what Dan recommends as you go through that webinar and hear that. Uh, and then uh, he talks at length in the webinar and in that slide deck about how you go about doing that. You may look at the framework document itself and recognize it's, it's very long and there's a lot in there. Uh, and if you listen to the webinar, you'll hear him talk about how you select appropriate elements uh, to do the uh, the formative and the annual evaluation in there. Um, and I'm looking forward to working with Eric and Laura on going through that process.
So um, just a a little bit of insight into how we got here, and it's a little bit fuzzy. This is uh, this fall, winter, right in the kind of the, the peak of the the COVID season, but uh, Laura and Nancy not being here. I had some conversations with Dan Nared. We looked at a couple of different uh, options in terms of a super to, Superintendent Evaluation Framework. Um, provided board members with uh, you know, an opportunity to sort of reflect on those. Dan was obviously supportive uh, and helpful, I should say, uh, and just sort of understanding this process. And so while we didn't officially adopt it yet, he provided some support in conducting the formative evaluation that we, we did with Steve uh, this winter. And then uh, by formally adopting this process, uh, you know, having the support of WSB, obviously the, the webinars and things. And so we'll, we'll be launching that uh, here and I'll, I'll work with Laura and then um, I think we'll, I think we'll probably do that in closed session as a board to talk about that initially and then get the process started here this summer.
Will that be happening, do you think, in July or August?
Uh, yes.
I know it'll be this summer and I know, you know, there's a lot of things have to do with scheduling.
Yeah, I think what you and I will do is uh, maybe sit down, uh, take notes together and just think through next steps and then we'll uh, we'll propose something to the board.
Okay.
Either in July or August.
And also just to let everybody know that that Dan has uh, indicated that he's available either electronically or if we need him in person uh, to help uh, in the initial implements, implementation stages if there's any assistance that's needed.
Does ev- does everyone remember that Dan used to be the superintendent here? Okay, all right, wasn't sure.
Go ahead, Brenda.
So um, I'm not sure I followed your plan. The, so are we gonna formally vote to accept this as our, or?
I think we did uh, already.
Yeah, that's right, we did.
I think we did it in January.
Yeah, that's right. Um, and so then you mentioned the closed session. Is that, is that the, I mean, that's usually what we do with the formal evaluation. Yeah, okay, so that's what you're.
Yeah, yeah, well, that'll come. So I, so what we'll do is Laura and I will sit down, we'll, we'll review all of this and make sure, probably connect with Dan, run that plan by him to make sure that it's in accordance with, with the model. And then uh, we'll communicate with the rest of the board in the next few weeks.
I think we probably should get a date on the calendar though, as soon as possible, because I mean, it's already halfway through June and
Yep.
people's calendars are very complicated over the summer sometimes. So I think we should probably work toward that pretty soon to get.
And I mean, we, we, yeah, we would do it probably in accordance with a regularly scheduled board meeting, you know.
Just add some time to a regular, okay, that sounds good.
Except now that we have committees, is it harder to add a special board meeting to a regular board meeting?
Probably not, because we have people booked three Mondays instead of four now. So I think it might make it a little bit, uh, I think it should be pretty straightforward for us.
They're booked from four to six, no.
Regular.
Four to s- four to eight for the two committee meetings.
Right, but we still have regular board meetings that start at six, so we could do a closed session five to six before that if we needed.
But don't we have a committee meeting before the?
We have that held for closed session in case we need it.
Sorry, I don't know this, but what is your one-year anniversary? I know it feels like a long time, but I know it's just coming up, right?
People ears or dog ears there? Uh, July first? People ears or dog ears there? July first.
Right. Any other questions on that process? And Lauren and I will follow up very soon. We'll get that rolling. All right, then moving on to kind of the next section on facilities master planning. Steve will hand it over to you for funding and referendum.
So these all fit together. So you see them all separated on here, but you really need to think about this as a as an entity. All for these components going together. I started out with the funding piece and Pete's online with us via Zoom. But we wanted to make sure that, and Angie also, sorry, I should have mentioned that. We want to make sure that that we gave you a quick refresh on what we heard from Mike Clark from Barrett. So if you remember, one of the things that he talked about was he looked at our mill rate for our property taxes. And he talked about what that was going to look like over the course of the next few years. The district has been incredibly fiscally responsible and has also worked diligently to ensure that debt is paid down. The benefit to that obviously is that it creates a great deal of flexibility within the mill rate that the district has. It also creates for us a bit of a timing issue. Because as we look at what will happen to the mill rate over the course of the next couple of years, as that debt is paid off. It creates an opportunity for us as we look at our facility planning to do some extensive work. I would argue that it's legacy work for the district. I within the current stable tax rate that the district has maintained for many years. And so a couple of things to remember that he shared with you are the likelihood that as debt drops off, that we will have an opportunity to consider a smaller referendum in the next couple of years, followed by a larger referendum. On the funding piece of it, you'll see that the attachment has an election schedule in there. And those are all the dates going out through 2026. One of the reasons they go that far out is we don't want to lose sight of the fact that we have an operating referendum. And that we will want to address that in that twenty five, twenty six school year in order to renew that so that we have ample time to get that done. Between now and then, there are two important things to remember about the election cycle. You'll note that there is a spring election every year. That general election date is that first Tuesday in April, and you can see those laid out right through 2026. And then on an every other year basis, we have a fall election. And that is that Tuesday in November, and you can see that listed in the dates below there. So when we consider holding any type of referendum election or operating levy election, we prefer to have those on those regularly scheduled dates. If you choose to have elections on off dates, you wind up having to pay for that. That's very expensive. Perhaps not the wisest used taxpayer dollars. So we focus primarily on those those spring and fall election dates. In his presentation to you, he talked about two particular years to look at, and those are 2022 and 2024. And the opportunity to look at a smaller referendum for facilities in 2022 and that larger referendum for facilities in 2024. One way to think about that is to, I guess I would say, the idea is to think optimistically but plan pessimistically, right? I hope for the best, plan for the worst, is it's good to have a fallback option. We want to make sure that we are very, very deliberate about the work that we do. We'll talk about community engagement as we go through it. But in the eventuality that a referendum is not successful, it is in your best interest to have a fallback option. If you do your elections in the spring with a fallback option in the fall, you are able to ensure that whatever change happens to the mill rate happens before you get to the point where you have your mill rate has decreased before that set. So you want to get that done before the end of the calendar year. Hi, so those two referenda that he talked about again, he gave us a range when we talked about the 2022 and the 2024. And while maybe not giving you specific dollar numbers in here, you're looking at a referendum that's in the neighborhood of the one that was passed as part of the initiative to build Baird Elementary School in the first one. And that that second referendum could be significantly larger, perhaps up to five times the size of that. And we wanted to start talking about this today because, and now if we drop all the way down to the last item on the agenda. I there it talks about the community engagement and communications component of it. So if this is something that the board does want to move forward with, we want to make sure that we are very open, transparent with the general public, that this is something that we're interested in pursuing. And we want to ensure that we have ample time to go through the engagement process. In my experience doing this, if you have two years to do it, it gives you the need, the opportunity to really engage with them to ensure that the referendum meets the needs of the community from the aggregate size all the way down to the individual projects that are in there. I think that's most important with that large referendum that he presented to us as that opportunity in 2024. You think about where we're at right now, it's 2021. We've got plenty of time to do that. We're perhaps a little tight on the shorter one. But if we look at it as one continuous process, then that the one that would happen in the intervening time period would happen as a part of that community engagement process. So we would be well underway with it. We would have had multiple opportunities to go back and get feedback from the general public and make any adjustments that we need to as we go through it. So we really wanted to get this out in front of you today, mostly to make sure that you are thinking about it. That you are considering the positives and perhaps the the concerns that you might have about engaging in a referendum. And then if that is something that you want to do, I'm going to spend just a bit of time talking about what are some of the best practices that we should take into consideration as a board. When we think about that two-year process to get ramped up so that we're ready to go out for that ask to the public. So let me stop before I go on and ask what questions you might have about that.
Um, I don't really have a question as much as a just a comment. And having listened to Pete now for the last couple of years kind of talked to us about this and knowing this is on our horizon and knowing how important it is and how how we fund education in Wisconsin and how other districts are forced to do this and go through this process as well. It's not just Green Bay. It's it's everywhere. And how much this impacts our public schools. So I just I just wanted to say that to remind people that it isn't just Green Bay. That everyone has is going through this process around the state and it's hard, it's difficult. You have to convince the voters and that's, you know, that's proper. But it's, you know, a lot of this has more to do with how we fund education now. So.
Yeah, I would just echo that. There's been a really good series in the Press Times the last few weeks about the the funding model and why districts need to go to referendum. And, you know, largely the way schools are funded across the state hasn't changed since nineteen ninety three. And it leaves a lot to be desired. It's definitely a complex issue. But the process of going to referendum, and there's districts around us who are going very frequently and have to for for a variety of reasons. And so it's it's a necessary part of the process. And I'm excited to continue to go along with it. I know we've got great people in our district who have gone through this before, who can can help to guide us. I know as a board, you know, many of us haven't gone through a referendum before and it's it's. There's a lot of information as a board member, as we saw with the the new board member orientation. And it didn't say anything in there about referendum. So that's a whole other chapter of the book. But, yeah, it'll be important for us to be able to understand things and for us to be able to know the hows and the whys. So glad that it's a long process. Excited to start that journey.
If that's a decision that the board winds up making, not a question that we're asking you to decide tonight, right? We just want to make sure that we get the process started here. There's a couple of things that we need to make sure that we do because that community engagement process really allows us to get out on a regular basis with the general public to help them understand where we've been, where we are today, and where we want to go next. We are very fortunate in the district. Mike Stengel is here with us. Our team, top down in our facilities department, top to bottom, has done an absolute amazing job with the facilities that that we have. And so it doesn't matter where you go. I was just in Fort Howard today, and you think about the renovation work that was done in there. Our facilities, whether they're our older historical facilities or they're brand new facilities, incredibly well maintained, just so much care that's provided to them. When you think about our taxpayer base, though, not uncommon, we are like many other communities across the United States. Between two thirds and three quarters of the people who live and vote in our community haven't been in our schools in quite some time. They don't have children who attend school. And so one of the things that we need to make sure that we do is we help them understand that we are good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars that were fiscally responsible. And so it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we are able to provide to them a comprehensive assessment of our facilities. What the conditions look like today, whether they are adequate to meet the needs of children both today. But then as we look forward ten, twenty, thirty years, what does the capacity look like? The number of kids that we can put into a classroom has changed over time. If you think about it, it was twenty five or thirty kids in a classroom. Sage came in, that became AGR. We did a lot of class size reduction out there. So how many children can you put into a classroom or into a building so that they truly understand that? And then a cost benefit analysis. So every building that we operate has a per pupil cost for it. And to make sure that we understand what those per pupil costs are and and that we are able to explain that adequately to the general public. In some cases, you can look at a facility, you can do the analysis on it. And then you can put that out to the general public, to that community engagement process. Is this a facility that needs to be renovated or added on to, or a facility needs to be replaced? It's hard to make that decision when you don't have that data in front of you. So that's a really important part of that facilities component that we have listed there. You'll note that there are several attachments and a link on that particular agenda item. Those serve as examples of how we can secure a third party to come in and validate the work that we've done. So that we are able to instill that trust in the general public that we are taking good care of those facilities that they've entrusted to us. And then also help, again, through a third party set of eyes, really quantify what work needs to be done. In the end, zip code should not dictate a child's experience in our classrooms. So regardless of which side of the river you live on, north or south, elementary or secondary, we want every child in the district to walk into a classroom and have an ideal optimal learning environment. And having that assessment that helps us understand where we have an opportunity to bring facilities up to speed, I think is really important for that conversation to have with the general public. Even those that quarter to a third of folks that I do have kids in our district. In many cases, they have not been in all forty two schools. They may only have been in one elementary school, one middle school, one high school. So they may not be aware of what it looks like in other areas of the district. And I think it's incumbent upon us, again, representing the district as a whole, to make sure that we are able to share that with them. That includes tours of facilities that they haven't been in before. It includes holding meetings in buildings that they may not have been in before so that they have an opportunity to see what that looks like and really be able to look across the district and across all grade levels. And then another thing that we need to do is we need to be able to project out our enrollment. What are we going to look like five or ten years from now? You can get a fairly accurate picture of that because those children that are going to be kindergartners in the district are already living somewhere here in town. And so we can go to the state, we can pull those birth to five records, we can do progressions to determine what the district enrollment looks like as a whole. What does it look by catchment area? And do we have our schools in the right places to accommodate our children ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? Being able to do that again helps to demonstrate need for our community so that they are able to effectively give us input on what we need to do next. That all goes to that last piece, which is the community engagement piece. I don't want to set a false expectation for you. If this is something that we as a district and you as a board want to do, it requires a lot of time and energy and commitment to do this. We will need to have many, many meetings throughout the community because they need to be an intimate part of this process. They need to be able to see the work that we've done with the facilities analysis. They need to see and understand the enrollment projections. And then most importantly, we'll need to go through scenario development. And and that is a process I can tell you, having gone through it. You, if you're labeling them by by letters, you hope you don't get to double letters as you go through it. But it really requires that you come up with scenarios and you take them out to the general public and you ask them, what do you think about doing it this way? And and they may come back and say, not like that. How about like this? And you have to go through an iterative process where eventually you begin to narrow your choices down. We may not be able to please everybody when we go through the process, but we want to make sure that the answers that we come up with resolve as many issues as possible as they're seen by our constituents and and those in the general public that participate in this process. So that's why I said having that that two-year timeframe may seem like an incredibly long time. But if we are out asking for a major addition to the district through that type of referendum process, it's really a wonderful example of measuring twice and cutting once and making sure that that we've got a plan in place that addresses our three K to twelve students that goes side to side, top to bottom in the district. And and again, sets the district up for success, not just today and tomorrow, but really ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. When you think about facilities, a facility investment, whether it's a a new build or a comprehensive remodel, that's a fifty to seventy five year investment in the community. So I was not being, I was not adding hyperbole when I said at the beginning that this is really legacy work that you as a board do because it creates a desired future for the community as a whole.
Well, and I always always like to think of the fact that if, you know, reinvesting is also protecting the investment already made by taxpayers. If you if you put in a bunch of money and then you don't maintain it diligently through the decades, that's that's lost investment to me. So I think our district does really well with that. You know, Mike is always on top of things. I, you know, we have a huge district and it's it's a real struggle. But, you know, you're protecting the investment already made by taxpayers.
Well, the early stages of the process include us. You mentioned the every child should have a similar experience in their schools. Well, before we hire the company to do the evaluation of our schools and things like that, will we have a time to define what we mean when we say, you know, every student should have this, you know? Are we are we going to define for that that company to say, this is what we're looking for? You know, can you create that? Or, I mean, I know what it'll come to, but I assume that that's part of this process. I think we've, I can't remember. I mean, we've done some of that, I think. But I think it would be good for us to, what we've. So what I've, what I remember that we've done is is the administration comes to us and says, you know, these six schools need some attention. And so we focus on those six schools instead of opening up our visioning to say, what about the other thirty five schools? And and what what is our definition of a great school building and which schools have that and which? And which schools have that and which schools need some work? And can we accomplish that? All those kinds of questions. Can that be part of this process in the early stages?
Absolutely. It actually has to be a part of that process. Let's just use an example. Are we going to decide that an adequate facility ensures that students eat lunch in a cafeteria and have physical education in a separate gymnasium? Okay, if that's determined to be a baseline component that we want in all schools, then we would need to go out and look at all of our schools and say, are there schools that don't have that? And if they don't, then that becomes a necessity as we go through that renovation process and we think about what ads need to go into a school. If we, we'll talk about what are adequate spaces for specialists? Art, music, physical education. What are the things that we need to ensure that we have the right spaces for special education? For English language learners? And as we go through and define those spaces that allow us to have an adequate ability to educate children, then we use that as that template and we ask them when they go out, does the facility have the ability to do these things, which we think are important to educate children? And so that's a community decision, right? And so that'll be part of our engagement process and it'll be part of your engagement process as a board. The community may decide, no, it's okay for us to have the combination gym and cafeteria. Or they may say, absolutely not, those two need to be separate. Then that's the kind of directive that we give them when they go out to look at that. They'll also look at things that we don't see. And one of the things that's very easy to see, and Mike could talk for hours on this, is we see the surface. So I can just tell you, in this room, if you'd have been in here over the course of the last month, this entire ceiling was pulled out. Because, and you may not have noticed this, you might now with the better lighting, but there was an enormous bow in the ceiling here, right? There is a lot of things that are above that ceiling, that are behind these walls, that we don't know. Mike knows that, right? We don't know that. The HVAC systems, the plumbing, right? All of those components. We want to make sure that in every facility that those are running at maximum efficiency because we spend general fund dollars on the costs that are associated with all of our utilities. So the more efficient we are with those, the more money we have to put into the classroom. But those aren't things that we can necessarily see. And so part of the process is to say, what is adequate in that component? And then to make sure that those behind-the-wall type of things are also present to that.
The other thing, as you were just talking about, you know, like facilities, we just made a huge commitment last year to, you know, I'm not sure exactly what we called it. Do you remember? About being net zero emissions or, I'm not sure. Sorry, I can't remember what we called it.
Sorry, I think it was sustainability was what you talked about.
Anyway, I mean, it was a pretty big commitment and we passed that. Sorry, we passed that. And so this is, you know, when we go to referendum and we start talking about facilities, this will be part of the work that we committed to, so.
Can we go back to dates? So I'm looking at this. You had said small referendum, large referendum. We're doing a small referendum. Are you talking about April of 2022?
Ideally, we would run that in April of 22. And I say that because obviously that gives us a fallback in November of 22. However, I just told you that ideally you have two years to do those types of things in order to set the community up. So that's a toss-up for us as we go through it. If you remember when Mike Clark was in here from Baird, he looked at where our current mill rate is and he looked at where our defeasment is. And he said, there's going to be a step down in our mill rate at the end of that 22 school year. So if we would like to take advantage of that, then that's a referendum that we would want to pass before the end of the 2022 calendar year. It's not a requirement that you do that, right, as part of the process? Because there's that small step down, but then there's a big step down that comes in '24. That is crucially important for us as a district. I think it's responsible for us, for our taxpayers, to maintain a stable property tax rate that's predictable for them. Not that it's going up and down and up and down over time. And so what that big step down does is it allows us to make this significant investment in our infrastructure without having any spike in our property tax rate. So the real key date for us is '24. But we do have an opportunity. And if you think about it in context, it's very similar to the opportunity that we had in the last referendum that was passed. About the same size, able to do about the same amount of work. If you think about that, that was a pretty substantial investment in our community. I'm not sure. I understand the timing short on it, but I'm not sure that that's an opportunity that we want to forego. So while April '22 would be the ideal, November of '22 would give you some additional time for us to do that engagement. We would be further along in the long-term planning process for the '24 referendum. And that might allow us to better identify some projects that would be supported by the community as a whole.
Historically, what role does voter turnout play in referendum success? So successfully passing, I mean, looking back, I looked at 2016, there's a huge difference in the number of voter turnout in April and in November.
There is, because oftentimes it depends on what else is on the ballot, right? At that point in time. We know that we'll have school board elections in April, so we know we've got a turnout that's connected to that. '22, you've got midterm elections in November, likely to be a higher turnout than that. So you're probably going to have a smaller turnout in April than you will in November. That turnout in April is often very focused on what's happening in the school district and perhaps is more locally focused than state or nationally focused.
So '22 will be, if I'm correct, primary for governor. So I think we would have in April, I think we'd have decent turnout. I mean, do we find, does that, does turnout play a big part in whether a referendum is? I guess, does that additional, does the additional votes we would have in November, additional voters we have in November, would that potentially play a part in our success in passing a referendum?
It could. One of the arguments that's out there is that people that are very focused on education at schools are far more likely to turn out in April. Those who are more focused at the state or the national level don't always respond to that April ballot. Sometimes then you have people at the November ballot that aren't paying as close attention to what happens in schools. I'll be perfectly honest with you. I think it's far less the timing than the content of the referendum and the engagement that you've done with the community before the vote. I think that makes a much bigger difference for us than it does in terms of whether or not we go in April or November.
Okay, so 2023, I mean, spring 2023, could we do that? I know we missed that jump at the end of the 2022 year. Could we do spring 2023 and then do spring 2024? I mean, is that an option?
You could, oops. All right, you could. And remember, you know, I'm drawing pictures here, but remember if your mill rate is here and it drops, right, it would be the first step that April '23 would be an ask to return, right? So there would be an ask for a small increase, but it would be asking to level-set it back where it was before. Not the end of the world there, because again, I think that's the opportunity to build the case for it. So if you were to look at November as your primary choice and April as your fallback, that would certainly give you that option there. You could look at April of '23 for your small ask to start with. The only challenge to that is you are going into it knowing that you allowed the mill rate to drop somewhat, and now you're asking them to return it. But again, I said, the outcome of the referendum is far more tied to the quality and the content of the community engagement that you do because that allows you to build an effective plan. Even if you're asking for a return, a level set to that mill rate in April of '23, if you build a strong case, you're far more likely to get that passed.
But Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. If we were to go to referendum in April of '22 for that small, we could message it as, if you vote yes and pass this referendum, your taxes will not go up.
Thank you for saying that. That would be the intention for both of these referenda. Both of these referenda would be intended to be passed at a level that stayed within a stable tax rate. So when we go out for community engagement, a big part of that conversation with the community is, where are your taxes? Where have they been? Where are they today? Where are they going tomorrow? And to project a stable tax rate moving forward. We've been on a small decline, and actually, the intentionality would be to continue that, right? So that there was a small decline built in there so that we were on the same trajectory. But that people would be able to see that we would be able to do an enormous amount of investment in our infrastructure without asking them for more money through their property taxes.
That applies if we would do November, though. Either spring or fall. I'm just, I'm looking at dates and
Sure.
January 25th of 2022 is not very far away. August 30th of 2022 gives us the year. So we would be cutting in half your recommended two years that you had talked about. So April's a little scary.
And keep in mind, we'll be in the middle, right? If this is something that the board decides to do, our end goal is that 24-volt. That's the big lift. That's the enormous impact on our community as a whole. And so we would be in progress towards that goal when we do that mid-ask. We may not have come to all of the answers through the community engagement process that we need to make the big ask. The hope is that we're far enough along in that process that some easily identifiable projects that have consensus from the community as a whole can be surfaced to go in to start with. The benefit of being able to do that is we can build a level of confidence in the community. If you look at Baird Elementary, you look at all the work that was done as part of the last referendum, you realize that we're able to pay that off in a four-year period of time. We want to make sure that we are completing projects on time or early. We're completing them on budget or under budget and that we are doing high-quality work that people can walk into. They can see it. They can understand that we are trustworthy and that it's appropriate to provide that funding for us.
So sort of the dichotomy of this, and I hear what you're saying, Dawn. So if we did wait until November of '22 and it didn't pass, and then we thought we would go back in '23, we would no longer be able to make that claim that your taxes aren't going to go up, because then they would go up. So we would lose that advantage. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the possibility of going to referendum in '23 and again in '24, to go in back-to-back years. You know, again, we can understand that, but to the layperson who isn't looking and saying, hey, the district just asked us for money. We told them no in '23. Now they're coming back and asking us again in '24. So I see both sides of that, I guess. My inclination would be to put it on our team to see if we can do it in April of '22. Again, really stressing the message that there is no tax increase with this. I know that a lot of this work is in place, so we're not starting from square one. It's not like our team is just like, oh, tomorrow we need to do a referendum. I think that we could move pretty quickly on it. It does then give us the backup plan. If the voters vote no in spring of '22, we'd be able to gather the feedback. What didn't you like about that plan? We could still then do something in the fall of '22 to make that better. Again, we're then going back twice in one year. But then, that, again, with that 2024 being the key year, gives us then a two-year process to build up to that. Where if we waited until, you know, the end, then it sort of cuts our timeline on the back end, so. I'm not saying I love either of those options. I'm just, that's the thought process on the other side that I use.
And maybe one thing to think about is, if we're going to do this, we're going to start that community engagement process. And Dawn, to your point, we will have some pretty substantial community input as we get to the end of this calendar year. And I think you as a board will know if there's support for moving forward with that smaller referendum. I think you will know if there's some common consensus components of that, that the community as a whole would support. And that does give you the opportunity as a board to look at it and say, if we're looking at the end and we're looking at what the ultimate goal is to pass that large referendum in '24, if for any reason along the way, you as a board say, now is not the right time to do this smaller referendum. We really need to spend more time in community engagement and planning. There's not a requirement that you do that. Like I said, that's really the opportunity because there is going to be that small cut in our mill rate. And I look at it as missing an opportunity. But if the concern is that the support's not there, the consensus isn't there, whatever, we haven't reached that critical mass that we feel confident in, there's the opportunity for you as a board to step back and say, we're going to really focus on '24. We want to get this done right. Whatever we need to do to make sure that we've convinced the public that this is the best thing for our children, you would have the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, and I agree with Eric. I'm not opposed to trying for spring of '22. I'm just hearing from you that dates are less important than the quality of what we put forward to the public. And I'm hearing two years to do it right, and I'm hearing we're going to do it in six months. And that's, I guess, and that's, I guess, if we said that is our goal, that January 25th, 2022 is our goal. But then we go through and we assess at that point whether or not it makes sense to move forward. What I don't want to do is put something forward that's going to be unsuccessful so that we get it out first in case it fails, so that we can get it out in November and we don't raise tax rates, I guess.
Sure.
I think it's great to put that out there as a goal, and ideally, that's what we will do. But I'm hearing, I'm hearing conflicting things, just, you know, you know, two years, high quality is really important, and we're going to do it in six months. So that's my number-one concern. What you're saying makes absolute sense.
Go ahead, Andrew. Okay, so actually, partisan primary, which would include the big-ticket governor and stuff, that's not going to be in April, it's August. So it should still be, I mean, it's still, you know, still school board and and city council. So that's, I guess, what I, there will probably be a large difference, I think, between the two referendums. And I think it would be relatively easy. Since we have been maintaining a priority list of projects, there's probably enough projects that there's broad consensus on to kind of fill in that small, that small dip while taking more time to, you know, I think to say that, you know, we are planning, we're in the process of planning a large referendum, but this large referendum is going to keep your tax rate the same and it's going to touch, you know, virtually every building in the district. In the meantime, let's, here's some critical, here's some critical projects, here's some critical roof replacements and things. And I think the, you know, I think the public would be receptive to that. And I think a lot of that planning, though you might tweak a few things, a lot of the planning's been done because we have that running priority list. So then, maybe what I'm hearing, summarize and correct me if I'm wrong, because I hear a lot of conflicting things, too. If we went forward and said, tentatively, we think we might go to referendum in April of '22. And so that process starts, we understand that's a little bit of aggressive in an ideal standpoint. But we start down that path and it gets to be January 4th of 2022, and we're like, this isn't going well. We're hearing mixed things. This, we don't like how this feels. We can say, nope, we're not going to do it. Or, on the other side of the coin, it's, okay, people are responding to that message. We've gotten some. Or on the other side of the coin, it's, oh, okay, people are responding to that message, we've gotten some good feedback, this makes sense, we don't have to raise taxes. Let's go forward with it. I- is that fair? If, if we kind of gave that direction here today, like move forward tentatively? And if it doesn't work out, that doesn't mean that all that work was wasted, it just means let's continue that work and maybe we'll do it then that fall.
Absolutely, and I think what I hear in that, so I want to make sure that I'm confirming. Is that there is a goal to move forward with the larger referendum in twenty four. Because that's really what that planning process is all about. I, in, in making sure that we've done the enrollment and the demographic analysis, that we've done the facilities analysis. That we've really started a concerted two year community engagement calendar that we can project to the public. Because I think like Andrew said, here's where we're going and here's a waypoint on that journey. So that people that are engaged in that community, a, a comment process, that community participation process. Understand that is a part of a larger whole. I think that's a really important part of the process. Because we want to make sure that we are able to advertise to the general public where we are going. And, and not surprise anyone that we're asking for this now and then coming back and asking for that later. And it's why I talked about the operating levy coming right on the heels of it. Because that is again, something that I, the, the district was able to get in place for a ten year period of time. That's an incredibly important part of our annual budget. We want to make sure that people know that's coming also. I think the more transparent we are about where we are today and the asks that we'll be making. One, three, four, five years from now. I think that helps people understand the, the strategic planning that goes into it and that there aren't any surprises in it. So if, if the board is definitely interested in, in moving forward with a, a big ask in, in twenty four. Then we would start that engagement process now and then to your point, Eric. We'd be able to gauge that on a month by month basis moving forward. And I think you as a board will know, I think you will have heard through the community engagement process, through community comment at the board meeting. Through feedback that we get via phone and email and, and just encounters with people in the community. I think you'll know what the sentiment is as we get to the end of the calendar year and are ready to round the corner.
So we're, we're obviously not taking a, a vote on this, but just summarize one more time. And just make sure that there's no major oppositions is that we are committed to the, the plan of going to a big referendum. For our district in twenty twenty four. Some of that work will start. Now, we will assess later this year if we, we feel we're comfortable with going to a smaller referendum. To maintain that tax, that, that mill rate in April. And if so, then we'll go forward with it. And if we're not ready, we'll push pause and then continue to assess. But again, knowing that we're leading up to the, the, the major ask, the major project in twenty twenty four. Everybody comfortable with that right now? I mean, we're not kidding.
So next steps in the process then is we would look at putting out a request for proposal. For entities that could come in and assist us with this process. I'm a firm believer that, that that process actually unfold here at the board table, that you have an opportunity to interview those folks. We are asking the community to trust us, I think you as a board and our community need to see who might come in and have that level of trust in them. So we would reach out and, and use that process to determine who might be interested in coming in and assisting the community of Green Bay. And going through this, getting them in front of you as a board, allowing you to, to hear their presentations, ask them questions, make a final selection. And then that would be an entity that would help guide us through this work over that two year period of time.
And when do you see that start, that RFP and interview process?
I, as you see, we already got a couple of, of points of interest out here. I just talked to a third entity yesterday that would be interested in coming in and helping out. I, there are several really good outfits that are here in the Midwest. That specialize in, in working in, in the states here in the Midwest. I, I think we could easily have them in, certainly no later than August to present to you. I'd like to have somebody selected by the board to start the school year. The summer is a difficult time to do community engagement, people are out and about. But if we can get somebody keyed in now. I'd really like to be able to start this process as our students and our staff and our families come back in and begin their school years.
And then I can't, we did this last time, I can't remember how long that takes. The, the, from when we select them to when they have their report for, ready for us.
Part of it will depend on the content of the report and the things that we want. My anticipation is we will have progress reports as we go through it. And in particular, because we're looking at this midterm possibility. So we're going to need some preliminary feedback from them before we get to a final report.
Okay, yeah, that was my, my concern was the short timeframe. But, and as Andrew said, I mean, our facilities department has done a lot of some, just that, that similar kind of work. Of what's next on the list for needing some improvements and things. So that, the, the business that comes in to do that work. Will, will crosswalk it with the work that our facilities has already done. And hopefully it just becomes, well, I mean, if we go to referendum in April. Those projects will have to bubble up pretty quickly as, as critical projects, you know, projects that, that very few people will argue. That they're important projects to do. And, you know, if we have that, that list and can do that work quickly, then we could be ready by, for an April election.
And Mike already has that. Yes.
Yes, I've seen that list.
All right, so we've got short term, long term steps. Is there anything else you need from us, Steve, or anything else on this topic?
No, I think that I really appreciate the opportunity to have the dialogue. As I said at the beginning, this is an enormous ask, it's an enormous ask, not only the community, but for you as board members. And for the administrative team, it's a big commitment to go through. But if we are successful, it creates really that, that legacy opportunity for us. To ensure that all of our children in every facility in the district have that optimal learning environment. Both now and for generations to come.
Also, I mean, this, we've had a lot of, you know, Pete Ross has been kind of prepping us now for quite some time. And periodically coming to us to let us know, this is, this is on the horizon, it's going to have to happen. And I, I just, I think he's still on our meeting, but I just wanted to thank him for that. Because I, he's, he has a good way of letting us know, there's really no, not a lot of choice here, so.
I, I have to say thank you very much for that comment. The, the district is in great shape fiscally. These decisions that have given this board, this opportunity. Were made by people that preceded me for sure. It's been a long tradition in this district that the financial management plans for These opportunities to exist so that the tax base is not negatively impacted. As you work to improve your buildings and produce learning environments that are the best available for our children. This board has tremendous debt carrying capacity and the things that you can do in this district will be phenomenal. I'm very excited to hear the conversation from the board tonight.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, with that said, I would look for a motion to adjourn the board retreat. All in favor? I, opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero, thanks everyone, have a great night.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website. W W W dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having. By calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five. Or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.